Second, I want to remind everyone to mute the computer, the web taskbar on the computer. And to be calling it on the phone. Okay, I'm gonna do a member roll call now, and so after I call your name, if you can let me know if you are present. Holly. Hey Dwight.
Present.
Rob. Rob, I thought I saw you up there.
If you're, you might be muted. Try to unmute your audio on your computer, um, webex bar.
Okay, Rob. Okay, we'll get back to you. Daniel.
Present.
Vincent Kavikade.
Here.
Hamena. Hamena. Okay, Remena, I see your picture there. Either Kathleen or Peter.
I'm here.
Okay, James.
Present.
Rennie. Rennie.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Bernie. Okay, somebody needs to mute their computer. This is background noise. Okay, Bernie. Okay, and Gail. Gail or Hugh? Somebody just came in. Who, announce yourself, please. Okay, um. Um, I guess we'll continue. Uh, just to remind everyone that this is not a public hearing. Um, so please direct any comments from the public to the County Planning Board website or post it in the chat box. When I have, when I ask for a motion, I'm gonna ask for the member who makes the motion to identify themselves also for the second. And I will request a roll call, yea or nay, for the approval of the action. Back to the agenda, you've all gotten the agenda. The next meeting is May. Maybe we'll be like this, maybe we'll be together, hopefully, but, uh, looking iffy. So the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting of March 3rd. Does anyone have any audits or corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, if no one has any, can I have a motion? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Wait a second. Again, announce yourself.
Daniel Finger moves.
Move by Daniel Finger. Can I have a second?
Second, Kathy O'Connor.
Kathy O'Connor, second. So I'm gonna do a roll call. Holly.
Yay.
Dwight.
Yay.
Rob. Rob, you're not coming through. Okay, Daniel made the motion. Vincent.
Yep.
Yes.
Hamena. Yamena, you're not coming through. Kathleen seconded. James.
Yay.
Rennie. Bernie.
Hello.
You're on here.
Yeah, but I.
People are talking now.
I'm on, I just can't hear you.
That went well. Okay, um.
Richard, can you hear me?
Commissioner Marks, again, I just wanna hope that, uh.
I'll do that, I'll call in.
Anyway, whoever's talking, you're coming through the, to us.
This is Rob.
Hey, Rob, you're on. Okay, good.
Um.
And Hamena, we can hear you without calling in.
Yamena, are you there? Yamena, are you there? Okay.
Can you still hear me, Richard?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know why my computer audio wasn't working.
Okay, it's working now. Um, okay, um, I'm gonna, uh, not have any more remarks. Uh, Commissioner, you have some remarks for us. Norma.
All right, I had to unmute myself. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thank you for bearing with us as we kind of work through this. So there are a couple things going on that are kind of important. Um, number one, Census 2020, um, Ted's gonna give you a little bit more of a detailed, go-through of where we're at, but, um, overall, I think we're doing pretty well. We're almost caught up with, uh, with the United States, the national rate. Uh, we're about forty-four point seven percent right now, uh, based on the self-response rate. We have definitely seen some issues come up, like mail delivery issues and call-in center issues with the Census Bureau. And definitely, we think there are a lot of seniors that are waiting for their, um, paper surveys to respond, but we are definitely watching all this on a daily basis. I am physically sitting in the office today, but I think I'm accompanied by about four people. Our staff, to the extent possible, are all working from home and working off-site. So just so you're aware, uh, if, if, if there's anything you need, we're all reachable by email. Uh, I wanted to let you know that in the New York State budget that got approved last week, New York State removed Westchester County's ten million dollar bond cap. That's gonna be huge for us in terms of our ability to do some of that.
Norma, there's a lot of breakup on, I, I assume you're talking to a, a hands-free phone.
I'm talking to my computer.
Yeah, there's a little, there's background noise. Okay, go on.
I don't have a phone on, so it should be just this. Um, so anyway, the New York State, included in New York State's budget last week was the elimination of the ten million dollar bond cap. Again, that'll be important for us as we go forward with capital projects. And then lastly, um, with the adoption of the CARES app, gonna be surplus or some stimulus, PDG and emergency donations grant funds coming to the county. Um, we have over two point one million dollars of CDVG extra funds coming, and then over one million dollar of, of ESG, which we should be able to use for some short-term rental assistance or some eviction prevention, which I think is gonna be really important here in the county in the coming months. That's it for me, Richard.
Hello? Richard, you might have, perhaps, uh, unmute yourself, I'm sorry.
Is she back? Did we lose Richard?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I, I haven't done anything, so I don't know why there would be a change, but, um, is Norma there?
I am still here.
Okay, um, okay, let's go on if you have more.
No, I'm, I'm done, I'm all set.
Okay, let's, let's go to, uh, referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the County Planning Board, February sixteenth, twenty twenty, through March twentieth, twenty twenty. Anyone have any comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is Reenie. Uh, the Ludlow Transit Oriented Development rezoning that was postponed, is that on the agenda, or is that gonna be canceled?
Uh, we, it hasn't been referred yet. Uh, I mean, it, it would basically come back. Um, you know, it came first through as a, uh, let me, let me look at it. It looks like it was a, uh, scoping outline. So when the generic environmental impact statement is circulated, we would review that.
Okay, because, remember, we, we postponed it to the next meeting?
We postponed it to the next meeting?
Yes, when it came out, um, in the January through February fifteenth, it was postponed till the next meeting. And then the next meeting was canceled, and now we're at this meeting.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I'm wondering when we're actually going to discuss it, because there's a lot of.
Oh.
About it, and I have a question about it as well.
Right, I mean, usually, we do these presentations when it enters the EIS phase, simply because there's a lot more information to pull on, pull from, to make the presentation.
Right, but.
You know, because it's.
February at.
Huh?
There was something in the referrals, in the letters dated January sixteenth through February fifteenth, it was postponed. So I'm wondering, when this initial discussion is going to take place?
Someone, there's someone in the background noise, turning papers or, or something, and it's coming through. So either stop or mute your computer, please. Okay, I think, um, I think, Rennie, I think we were waiting for the next submission. Lucas, correct me if I'm right.
No, no, that's exactly what, what the situation is. The scoping hearing was opened. We responded with the letter that was in our last month's referral report. Uh, and they closed the hearing, and now they're gonna, we're waiting for them to circulate the final scope, which we have not received yet. And then once they circulate that, then they're gonna do an EIS, and then they'll circulate that. And that would be the ideal time for us to do a presentation, because we would have all this information.
Okay, but the last, at the last meeting, I have stuff prepared for this. It was postponed, we did not discuss it, remember, we adjourned early? At the March three meeting? And I, I. Okay, I'd like to submit the stuff that I have on this, because, um, I wanted to discuss it, and it wasn't on the meeting, there was going to be a presentation, it was postponed. And it has not come up again, and I don't want anything to indicate that I am agreeing with what they've done. And I have information that I'd like to submit.
Wanna submit in writing, or you wanna submit verbally?
Well, either or.
I mean, I mean, Reenie, another way you could do this is, is you could have, take, give me your comments, you email them to me, and I'll put them in the file. And, and that way, when.
Is this bill.
When it gets referred again, I have your notes right in front of me.
Okay, uh, who is talking?
This is Lucas. I mean, we, we can't do anything right now, because it has to be referred again, which the city will certainly.
Okay, so it, it was withdrawn then, not just postponed?
Withdrawn.
Okay.
No, no, no. It was referred, um.
Somebody mute the. Somebody, please mute, their noise is coming through.
Okay, so this, this matter was referred back in January by the city. And then we responded with a letter on January thirty-first.
Right.
Um, which was within their, which was in the city's, the city had a comment period, and we responded during that period. That period has closed. So now, we're waiting for them to move to the next phase of seeker, where they will again refer a much more comprehensive package of information, um, which is, which will be this generic environmental impact statement. And that's where we will have the opportunity to really kind of delve deep into the proposal and offer very detailed comments. So that's why I was suggesting that if you wanna send me over what you have, I'll have it ready to go when we get that next referral. I'll, I'll look it over in the meantime, and then, you know, we would have it, we would have it ready to go. It's gonna come back.
Yes, uh, but I'd like it to come back before the scoping document is done. Um, and so I.
Well, the scoping document is done, it's, that, that's, that's come and gone.
Okay, I think, again, uh, Reenie, if you can email to Lucas your comments, then when we actually deal with the substance of the, not just the scoping document, which is now, you know, finished, we can then discuss all of your comments.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments on the referrals?
Uh, I have, this is Daniel. This is Dick, I had a quick question.
Thank you, Carter.
On NURSHL proposal.
Again, who is this?
Daniel.
Okay, Daniel, you're echoing, I don't know why, but you're echoing.
I have to turn your computer off.
My computer's off.
Okay, well, go ahead then.
Um, um. NURSHL submission, I just had a question on how the parking spaces are calculated.
Daniel, you, sorry, it's just an echo, we can't understand you.
All right, hold on a second.
I just muted your, uh, computer audio. Okay, go ahead.
All right, let's try that, is that better?
Yeah, yeah, better.
Okay, thank you. Quick question on the NURSHL submission. Um, how is the parking spaces, number of parking spaces calculated?
Which submission now are you talking about?
The twenty-sixth Garden Street.
Okay, we're gonna be discussing that in action items, so, hold your.
Okay.
Question. Okay, anything else on the referrals? Okay, I have one comment on the referrals regarding the Tarrytown YMCA affordable housing development. I, at this point, I am very much concerned with the demolition, largely the demolition of historic building and the, basically eviction of SRO units. Now, I know there's, there's gonna be affordable housing, and supposedly, two years later, people are gonna move in, but I, I need more information to convince me that this is a good development. So I, I, when we vote on the ratification, I'm going to be abstain on the Tarrytown one, uh, for, um, for those purposes, and hopefully, we can get more information on it. Okay, are there any other comments on the referrals? I have a motion on the referrals. This is Dwight.
A motion, James, all right.
Okay, James, you're making a motion, second?
I'll second, this is Dwight.
Dwight, seconds, I'm gonna do a roll call again. Holly.
Yay.
Rob. Rob. Daniel.
Yes.
Vincent. Vincent.
Yes.
Hamena.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Rennie.
Yes.
Bernie.
Yes.
Gail. Hugh. Okay. Now we're gonna have a referral of interest on the form-based zoning ordinance proposed in Portchester, New York. And Lucas is gonna make the presentation. Go ahead, Lucas.
Okay, thanks. Um, so this is a, a pretty substantial referral, one of the, um, one of the most complex and involved referrals that we've reviewed in a while. Um, so, we sent you a draft letter, we sent everyone a draft letter in your day of meeting packets, uh, so you can also refer to that while we do the presentation. Um, but, uh, you'll see, when it gets to the next couple of slides, you'll see that there's a certain timeframe for us to respond. So, basically, this is, um, a pretty substantial rezoning in the sense that the village of Portchester is looking to basically delete their existing zoning ordinance and replace it with a new form-based zoning ordinance. And, uh, that's kind of what we're in the middle of right now. So if we go to the next slide, um, you'll see that, uh, basically, this is an update of the current zoning ordinance, which was adopted in nineteen seventy-five. And, um, about eight years ago, the village did a comprehensive plan. Uh, and that comprehensive plan, basically, the thrust of the plan was to focus the protection, on protection of existing residential neighborhoods, focus on future uses and higher densities in the downtown and waterfront areas, and other key areas that have potential for redevelopment. And finally, that plan recommended further study of form-based zoning, which brings us to today. So, on the next slide, let's see just a quick evolution of how, um, this zoning ordinance has evolved. The, the initiative began in February of twenty eighteen, and there's been various outreach meetings and stakeholder meetings held since then. Uh, they began the EIS process in the summer of twenty eighteen. On the next slide. Am I echoing?
You were, keep going, I think you may be better.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't touch anything, so I don't know why that would occur, but, um, okay.
Many of you guys are muted.
The next slide, uh, I'm sorry, okay, so then, the most recent review is we reviewed a draft GEIS back in November. Uh, that EIS contained a second public draft of the zoning ordinance, so it was basically a draft of the ordinance that we got to take a look at and review. Uh, we submitted a letter on your behalf, um, December twenty-third, and on the next slide, um, you'll see that the current review is now a final GEIS. Um, and this contains another draft, the third public draft of this zoning ordinance. And so now we get to review both the EIS, the final EIS, and the revised draft, and comments are due at the end of the month. Um, so, just to give you a brief overview of what's going on, um, the map on the left is the current zoning, and the map on the right is the new zoning. And the map legend on the top is the current zoning, that's in the top in the middle, and the map legend on the bottom in the middle, that's the new zoning. And you can see, basically, that the current zoning has many more districts than the new zoning. So the, the new zoning attempts to basically kind of reduce the number of districts within the village and make them kind of a character-based district. Uh, you can see, if you look at the two maps and compare them side by side, you can see that there are some similarities with how the districts are drawn, particularly at the north end of the village. These are the single-family zoning districts that the new zoning basically attempts to kind of keep the same. Um, without, the idea is that the, those existing neighborhoods will just kind of carry through, um, to the new ordinance. The major changes are kind of with the downtown and waterfront areas. Uh, if you click next slide, um, you'll see these zones here, um, that I've highlighted are kind of like, either the planned mixed-use zone, which is United Hospital, or the planned residential district, which, um, was basically used, you know, a while back to develop, um, some condominium development. Because these two districts have special regulations, they are just gonna carry them forward into the new zoning without any changes. So the condominium developments are existing, those won't change. The United Hospital site, the special regulations that were written a few years back for that district will remain in place, they won't be touched by the new ordinance. On the, on the next slide, um, these are just some, uh, kind of pictorial representations of the different districts, they, these are called character districts, because the, they focus more on the form, they're like a form-based district, so they focus more on, you know, the, how the buildings would look, what the shape of the box is, rather than what you kind of put into the box. So you can see here that CD three, that's the lowest-density district. Um, that kind of also includes the three districts that are below that, the CDR twenty, CD three R seven, CD three R five. Those just simply differentiate between the size of, the minimum lot sizes for single-family houses. They're all kind of grouped together in this CD three district, which has regulations for single-family houses. Uh, going further down the list, you have CD four, which is general urban. Um, then on the next, on this slide, you've got CD five W, which is the waterfront. CD six is the urban core, this is the area that's the closest to the train station in the downtown. Um, it would allow the highest density, mostly transit-oriented development. The next two are the existing districts, the existing planned districts that I mentioned before. And finally, they have a civic district that would govern kind of municipally-owned open spaces. Uh, the next slide shows that there is a wide range, a wide menu of, um, regulations that would apply to these different districts. Uh, this is just a chart that I made that shows, you know, how different regulations would apply to different districts. So this or, this ordinance is gonna regulate a lot of different things, from, everything from like block size to frontage types, permitted uses, of course, um, the number of buildings on the site, setbacks, uh, building types, encroachments, parking for both cars and bicycles, um, non-building components, things, uh, landscaping, fence, fence sign regulations, lighting regulations, buffers, uh, screening. Each, each, um, type of regulation is applied to each district. Some have all the regulations, some have fewer. You'll notice that some of these have little asterisks in them. These, um, are regulations that would only apply for development sites of three or more acres, and I'll get to that in a, a little bit later in the presentation. The next two slides, uh, show just kind of a, a good representation of what these form-based regulations look like. This is, uh, for the CD three district, which would be the character district for single-family residential. So you can see here that, um, you know, a block size at the top, that's applicable only to development parcels. I'll get to that later, that, that's the three-acre or more, um, sized parcel. But you can see here that, you know, they regulate different types of frontage. Then there's, um, what they call lot occupation, which is in the middle of the slide, that's kind of another way to say things like lot coverage, or then there's this other one about lot inflement, which is kind of a different, um, term that is in this particular ordinance. Uh, things like setbacks are shown in these, um, in these graphics on the, uh, the right-hand side of the slide, um, showing how the setbacks have to be arranged, um, you know, both for the principal building and for an accessory building. Uh, there's also regulations about building height, facade, uh, if you go to the next page. Uh, also, they regulate roof type, um, and roof pitch. Uh, certain building types are permitted or not permitted. You can see in this case, for the residential district, cottages, houses, and estate houses are all permitted. But other types of houses, or other, like duplexes or townhouses, uh, other types of buildings are not permitted, and this changes for each district. Um, another type of regulation is encroachments. Um, this is where, this kind of dictates where certain types of building elements could be constructed. So for example, um, it says that, you know, like patio decks are not permitted in the front yard. Or, but they're permitted in the side and rear yard. Uh, or satellite dishes are not permitted in the front yard, but they're allowed in the side yard or rear yard. Going further, there's vehicular parking requirements, we're gonna get to that later, um, if you go back just temporarily. Uh, we'll get to the parking later on, and the bike parking later on. Um, but also, you'll see here that there's also regulations for non-building components. Uh, this is dictated by lot layer, which we'll explain in a little bit, but there are certain rules about, well, if you wanna have a hot tub, it has to be in the third lot layer, so it can't be in the front of the building. There's, there's rules about where it would go on the site. And also, there's, you know, regulations about landscaping, fences, you know, no, in this district, you can't have a wrought iron fence or a chain link fence or a razor wire fence, but you can have a wood fence or a stucco fence, for example. So going on to the next slide. This is just a little aside, is in looking at this ordinance, and, and this is kind of where the, the generic environmental impact statement comes in, is, is how will this zoning change the built environment? And that's a lot of what we've had to examine in reviewing this, this ordinance. So you see here, the map on the right, well, the map in the center shows the proposed zoning. And the map on the right shows a number of study parcels that were examined in the environmental impact statement. If you look at the next slide, the, you'll see this table. And this table quantifies how the zoning will impact those study parcels only. So the EIS only examines those study parcels that were highlighted. And I'll explain this, this table to you because it's, it can be kind of confusing. So the, the column that says existing inventory, that is what is currently in those study parcels right now. So right now, there are 27 single-family houses in those study parcels, 637 multifamily residential units. If you read down the column, there's, you know, retail, office, industrial components to it. And then there's the estimation of how many people are currently in the, in those parcels, living there, employees that are working there, et cetera. If you go over to the two right-hand columns, this is the estimated 20-year build-out. So this is what could be built in addition to what is already there, not, not necessarily replacing what could be built in addition. So under the new zoning, there would be no single-family residential built in these, on these parcels. There would be up to 2,900 additional multifamily residential units built on these parcels. If you kept the existing zoning, it would be 511. So that's the difference. Going down, you can see that there's this potential for additional retail, office, additional industrial. This was a question that got asked. A lot of people thought that the number 24,000, that would be the total industrial that would be permitted in these study parcels. That's not the case. It would be how much additional industrial uses could be added to these parcels. If you look in the center two columns, this is a full maximum build-out. And this, so this is kind of like the 100-year time horizon. So, and again-
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Okay.
It says existing zoning. So for example, here it says 157,000 general retail. Then it says proposed zoning. The number is the same. Does that mean that it's going double or that the amount will remain the same?
It will, the, the, the development potential remains the same for that, for, for general retail under the 20-year build-out. The existing zoning was-
Okay, so no new retail, no new general office, no new industrial?
Yeah, no, yeah, not a incremental increase over the existing zoning, well. The, the main, the main increase comes with multifamily residential.
Multifamily, yes.
Mm-hmm. And so, as I explained, the center columns just represent a, kind of like a, a full maximum build-out, which is around like about a 100-year timeframe. So on the next slide, we'll basically see, we'll get an idea.
Well, Lucas, can we stay on that slide for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, this is Richard. I live in Portchester. I've been involved in this process for a long time of the four-based code. And I have a lot of substantial issues, which I won't bore you with today, but the biggest one is what this slide shows. So this slide shows that under the new zoning, there could be 2,900 apartments built. There could be an additional 9,500 people living in those apartments. And on another page, there'd be additional 1,077 schoolchildren living in those apartments. This is a dramatic change to the village of Portchester in terms of scale. I mean, you're talking about adding a third, additional third of population, and this is all in the downtown area. And the only way this can be done, since there are basically no vacant properties in the downtown, is to tear down existing buildings, most of which are on the State Register of Historic Places, in order to replace them with these 2,900 new multifamily residents. I have personally serious issues with increasing the density, allowable density in the village under this new ordinance. That's my personal opinion. I'm going to let that, give that opinion directly to the village board in Portchester. But I just want you to understand the dramatic change to the village that these numbers mean. Okay, you can go ahead, Lucas.
Okay, if we go to the next slide, you basically can get a sense for what Richard was just talking about. The growth, the growth in the village will basically come in these, come through with these downtown zoning districts. So this is the CD6 district, and you can see in the center of the slide that the building height is now going to be a six-story minimum with a 12-story maximum. And this is where you're going to really see a lot of the density take place. So this slide, the next slide, which is the area surrounding the CD6, which is the CD5 district. And then on the next slide, the CD5W district. This is where a lot of the density would be added to the ordinance. And this is where you're going to see the, the increase in those numbers. So moving forward, these are the character-based regulations. And in the ordinance, everything that I showed you on those charts for the, on, on those tables for the CD3 district, all the different regulations that were shown, they all get explained in this part of the ordinance, which is, which basically, when you look at those different tables in, in the, in the district regulations, you're going to have to refer to all of these sections here to kind of understand what they mean and how they work. So there's a lot of back and forth between those regulations and the stuff that's in this section of the ordinance. So on the next page, let's go over a couple just so you kind of get the gist of it. For example, when I mentioned before lot layers, when you look at the lot layer regulations for a particular district, it's going to refer you to this section of the ordinance where it has kind of like more of the details about what the lot layers are, how they work, et cetera. So you can see here that like, this is a diagram of what the lot layers would look like. And, you know, the, the principal frontage is the first layer, then there's a second layer and a third layer. And it says, you know, if you want to have outdoor grilling equipment, it's got to be in the third lot layer. If you want to have a swing set, it's got to be in the third lot, that kind of, that kind of thing. The next slide talks about building types. Again, this is what I mentioned before, certain types of buildings are permitted in certain districts. This governs that. You'd have to refer to this section. It has descriptions of what each type of building would look like, what districts are located, they could be located in, et cetera. The next slide talks about frontage types. Again, this is, you know, when you go to a particular district, it will say, okay, the, the common yards are not permitted, but terrace light wells are permitted, forecourts are permitted. Well, what are those things? You'd go to this particular section and it would explain that to you. Then on the next slide, we talk about various other standards. These are things like block size, facade. There's a lot of, there's a lot of terms in here that a lot of people may not be familiar with. Things like facade glazing or lot infotment. These are terms that we don't really see a lot of in ordinances. And you'll see in the comment letter that we circulated, a lot of these terms are not defined, and that is an issue that we identified. If someone is doing this and they don't know what these terms mean, that, that might be an issue. Moving on, so moving on to the next slide, so all these, like I mentioned-
Can you mute everybody but the speaker, please? There is so much background noise that it's difficult to hear. Please mute.
So as I mentioned before, all of these, the various regulations are kind of expressed through these, these, these different, they're explained through all of these different sections in the, in the building and lot standards. Going forward, I wanted to call a little attention to another set of regulations in the ordinance, which are called development parcels, which are on the next slide. I mentioned before that there are certain regulations that are applicable only to development parcels. So these are development sites that are three acres in size or larger. And on the next slide, you'll see that there's a whole article in the ordinance, Article 5, that, that concerns these parcels. Development parcel plans and standards, a whole section of the code that, that deals with that. And on the next slide, you can see some examples of, of that. So the idea is that if someone is developing a, a large site that's three acres or larger, there might be new streets or new rights of way that get developed as part of that proposal. And so they have regulations for the thoroughfare types. There's regulations about what types of light poles can be used. They have to provide bicycle lanes or protected bicycle lanes, depending on where the site is located. There's also regulations governing the types of street trees that could be used. There's a wide variety of, of regulations that apply to these parcels. If you go to the next slide, we had some issues with, with this. Not so much the idea that they wanted to regulate large parcel development, but it was the idea that they're calling these, 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 these parcels development parcels, which is such a generic term. And, you know, when I first opened the ordinance, it took me a while to figure out that the term development parcel meant a parcel that was three acres or larger. Most people see the term development parcel and they think, well, that's just any parcel that's under consideration for development. So it would be a good idea if they could tighten this, this definition or perhaps maybe even use a different term. Also, you'll note that even with that definition, it's defined different ways in different parts of the ordinance. In the, in Article 1, it's defined as three acres or more. In Article 10, which is a definitions section, it's defined as five acres or more. So, so even this has to be worked out. I was told by the village that it, it really is going to be a three-acre size regulation, but obviously, they have to go through the ordinance and fix these errors. Going on, even though this is a form-based code, there is going to be substantial regulation over permitted uses. So as you can see, this is a use table that is very similar to what you might see in another ordinance, with permitted uses, special exception uses, uses that are prohibited. On the next slide, you'll see the, another issue that we cited is that most traditional ordinances, because the use table is so important, the use table is put at the end of the ordinance as an appendix that can be just looked at, at, you know, as you go through the rest of the ordinance. In this case, the use table is just set right in the center of all of the building and lot standards, which can make it difficult to find for someone who just wants to see what types of uses are permitted. Also, because of the way the ordinance is organized, special exception uses, which is a substantial set of regulations, is invisible when you look at the table of contents. So an applicant looking to, to find special exception uses would have, might have a tough time finding where it is in the ordinance just by using the table of contents. So one of the things that we've recommended that you'll see in the letter is that, you know, maybe more attention can be paid to raising the profile of certain regulations to help them be found more easily. So now just going on to a couple of other interesting things about the ordinance. The parking regulations proposed in the ordinance are very different from what we've seen in other ordinances. This is the first time where, at least that I've seen, where an ordinance in Westchester would not only create a parking minimum for certain uses, but there would also be a parking maximum. So in this case, the number of parking spaces couldn't be less than what's prescribed in the parking table, but it also could not be more than 10% greater than those, than, than the regulation is shown. In addition to that, there's a large menu of possible reductions that an applicant can apply for to reduce the required parking count. The first of these is, on the next slide, a parking reduction for shared uses. So if you have more than one use on a particular site or multiple uses on the same or even adjacent blocks, you can apply for parking credit. So this diagram is kind of confusing at first, but if you look at it, if you combine residential on one side, let's say, with office on the other side, you'll get a number 1.4. And that number is the denominator by which you would divide, if you add the two parking requirements, they're both residential and office, you add them together, then you divide by 1.4, and that is the new parking requirement for those shared uses. On the next slide-
Lucas, hello, Lucas, this is Richard.
Yes.
We are, because of all the problems we're having, we're going late, so maybe you can wrap this up.
Sure. If you just look at the next couple of slides, Michael, if you just go through them kind of quickly. They offer parking reductions for transit. There are parking reductions offered for bicycle parking on the next slide. And then there's another, a bunch of reductions you can apply for, repayment in lieu, unbundling the parking from the rent, reductions for car sharing. And then there's another more flexible kind of catch-all reduction that can be applied for by meeting with the planning and development zoning administrator. If you go a couple of slides down, then we'll have the other parts of the zoning ordinance. This is just, there's a procedural element that kind of offers an applicant the ability to have a, a conference with village staff to kind of determine what types of approvals are required. This section also governs referrals to the county planning board. We found a bunch of inconsistencies with that, but we worked with village staff to fix it. Still one remains. You'll see it in the letter, but it's, it's nothing major. Moving on, just, there's also going to be some non-conformities. The most, the most, the most important to know about is that all opaque security grills and billboard signs need to be removed. They will no longer be complying with the ordinance, so they will have to go. Other, there are provisions for other non-conformities. And on the next slide, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of jargon terms throughout the ordinance. The, the definitions are not always consistent or available, which we noted in our letter. So then finally, just to kind of tell you where we're at now, the, the final GEIS addressed the comments that were made on the, on the final, I'm, I'm sorry, on the draft. A lot of things were added to the EIS, the final EIS, because there were many commentators who noted that, if you look at the next slide, there are many commentators who noted that there weren't, the, the DGEIS did not contain a number of important things, like a methodology for the build-out analysis, a traffic study, a schools analysis. These were added as appendices to the final GEIS. On the next slide, this EIS also contained a revised draft GEIS as an appendix. And this included additional sections on fair share mitigation, a section describing mitigation measures for displacements. I had a couple of slides just detailing that, which we can just, basically, they have a plan to, to study and reach out to the public about the potential for displacement. And if you go one or two more slides further, these are just the comments that, that the GEI, the final GEIS responded to. They basically responded to adequately. We made comments about the language around affordable housing. We recommended some changes to the parking regulations. On the next slide, we recommended changes to county funding board referral requirements, the I-NI mitigation that we always bring up. They took care of that. They addressed those in the final EIS. These are just the comments that are in the current letter that you have in front of you. You know, there are a couple of issues that remain about readability. Um, you know, there are a couple of issues that remain about readability, um, the definition of terms, the understanding of the code. Um, on the next slide, you'll see that the final GEIS attempted to address this by saying, "Well, we're going to have these, uh, post-adoption workshops where the village will meet with the public." Um, they have this executive summary that they said could be used as a how-to, a how-to-use guide. I reviewed the executive summary, uh, it, it, in a lot of ways, it doesn't address the comments that we made. So, the letter that, uh, we circulated to you makes a lot of those comments again. And so finally, um, at this point, um, we would just need to know from, from you if the letter that we circulated to you is okay to send. If you want to make changes to it, um, let, let us know. Uh, the only thing is we have to transmit it to the village by the end of the month. And with that, uh, the presentation is over.
Okay, thank you, Lucas. Um, I think, um, instead of going over those comments now, why don't people, uh, write comments to Lucas on any, uh, additions or suggestions that you have regarding the Portchester Form-Based Code? Okay, let's go to the first action item. Actually, we're going to do SMM 21, Sawmill Section B Relief Sewer, Town of Newcastle. I think Marion is going to be talking to us on this.
Yes, I am.
Richard, can you hear me? This is Rob.
I can hear you.
All right, I'm on my third phone, so great, thanks.
I'm sorry, this is, uh, Michael. Um, I, my internet cut out at the complete inappropriate time. I did not get the vote for the, uh, Portchester.
There was no, there is no vote. The, we're going to send comments, uh, in writing to Lucas.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Sawmill Section B.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Now, this is Marion Pampa, Associate Engineer, Department of Environmental Facilities. I'm here to speak about SSM 21, the Sawmill Section B Relief Sewer. This is a capital budget amendment. This project is being done to address, uh, capacity issues in the county's sawmill trunk sewer in sections located in the town of Newcastle, along Hunts Lane, and in the downtown Chappaqua Center of the town. The project was originally programmed for design in the 2024 capital year. Uh, the county Executive's Office received a written request, co-signed by the Town of Newcastle and the Village of Mount Kisco, asking the county to move this project forward. Um, the project, uh, is, uh, the background of this is approximately 2,200 linear feet of trunk sewer, 24 inches in diameter. Um, can you pull up the schematic, Michael? I think it might be better for them to see that. Yeah, okay. So, we have, we have approximately 2,200 linear feet of sewer that is 24 inches in diameter. Upstream and downstream segments are 30 inches in diameter. The 24-inch diameter sections only have, approximately half the flow capacity of the 30-inch sections. The county intends to construct 1,600 linear feet of relief sewer, keeping it in Hunts Lane and bypassing the, the downtown section of the, uh, Chappaqua area. Uh, we will be constructing this project to deal with anticipated future flow increases within the Village of Mount Kisco and within the Town of Newcastle, as well as potential exists that the two of the Croton watershed diversion areas, the Riverwoods, uh, condominium complex and the Ashiba Farm Settlement are also anticipated to be diverted into the Sawmill Sewer District through the Village of Mount Kisco. They were originally intended to come into the district through Millwood and Briar Cliff Manor, but the length of construction was deemed to be, uh, too substantial. The route through the Village of Mount Kisco is a much shorter route and is more feasible in the, uh, mind of the villi, the, uh, village and the Town of Newcastle. And that's, if there's any questions, we'll answer it.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve this-
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
So, this is really just a replacement line to the sewer. Does it expand the capacity of the sewer by any cha, by any amount?
Yes, it's, it's going to be constructed in parallel. The old sewer is going to remain in service. The new one will be constructed parallel to it and will add the capacity that's necessary to deal with the future flow increases.
Okay, and so it will increase the flow, but will it increase the size of the sewer plant itself?
No, sewer plant is in Yonkers. Not, we're not, we're not talking about, we're not talking about substantial increases in, in, in flow that will affect the capacity of the Yonkers plant.
You're adding flow, but not adding capacity?
We're adding capacity to the sewer. We have capacity at the sewer plant to handle the flow. We just have, essentially, we have a bottleneck in, in seven sections of the sewer in the Town of Newcastle. And we're addressing the bottleneck.
This is Bernie Toms. What is the age of the current sewer line?
The 24-inch sections were constructed in 1930s. The upstream sections, the sections above, uh, the 24-inch sections were constructed about 1958.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve capital project vote?
This is Dwight. I'll move that we, uh, in the cap, to include this project.
Okay, Dwight-
This is Daniel, I'll second.
I'm sorry?
Daniel, I'll second. Daniel, second.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Holly?
Yes.
Dwight?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vincent Gubinski?
Yes, and, uh, thank you, Marion.
Uh, Jimena?
Yes.
Kathleen? Kathleen? James?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Kathleen, yes.
Okay, Penny?
No, I cannot vote for this unless I know a lot more about the impact on the sewer plant itself and what is being done to ameliorate existing issues with that sewer plant.
Hey, Bernie?
Yes.
Voting yes, Gail or Hugh? Gail or Hugh? Okay, uh, the motion passed with one objection from- Okay, the next item on the agenda, the, um, Housing Implementation Fund for 178 Warburton Avenue. This is the, uh, subject of last month's meeting, which was tabled for additional information. Okay, go ahead, Len. Len? Len, are you there? No, you're not coming through, Len.
Hello, I'm-
Okay, that's better.
Okay. All right, something happened. Good morning. Um, this is for 178 Warburton Avenue and 160 Cottage Gardens in the city of Yonkers. It is a fair and affordable housing development. The next slide shows the location map, which the location of the development is about seven tenths of a mile north of Getty Square and about the same distance from the Yonkers train station. It's located at the corner of Ash, pretty much at the corner of Ashburton and Warburton. The next slide shows the redevelopment master plan, which Cottage Gardens was one of the first public housing developments built in Yonkers in the 1940s. It had 250 units. It was deemed, has been deemed obsolete by HUD and the municipal housing authority of the city Yonkers embarked on a redevelopment similar to what they achieved for Mulford Gardens. With the existing structures removed, the road grid reinstated and the neighborhood reconnected to the surrounding area, along with introducing mixed incomes. Cottage will be redeveloped in six phases. Of the six phases, three have been completed, the fourth is under construction, and the fifth and sixth are subject of approval today. It will be reconnected to Ashburton and Warburton Avenue and will have 500 mixed income units when completed. The HIF funds will be the only county funds going into the six phases. The phase five and six are outlined on the master plan map in the, I guess, like the turquoise color. So, you can see phase five, the building fronts on Warburton. And then going in, in between phase five and phase six is the park. I don't know if Michael can point to that. So, right where he has the mouse now is basically the area of the park. So, on the next slide is the different pictures of the completed phases thus far. And then the next slide, so as men, noted, this is the final two phases of the redevelopment. It includes the demolition of the existing buildings and extensive environmental remediation. Includes the new construction of two buildings with 173 rental apartments. Uh, includes 11 studios, 85 one-bedrooms, 77 two-bedrooms. Has a, will include the construction of an early head start center, which will serve 64 children ages six weeks to 2.9 years. West Cop will be the operator and is the only, will be the only head start in Yonkers serving that age bracket. And it will have 35 outdoor parking spaces. It should be noted that the parking spaces were, most of the parking spaces are being developed as part of phase four. Um, and that'll serve this, these two phases, and then the park. The affordability, so it ranges from 30% AMI to 90%. And the, it, the average affordability will be 60, below 60% AMI for the 153 units between 30 and 80% AMI. And the next slide just shows the HUD income limits for 2019. It just should be noted that the 2020 HUD medium incomes were just released. So, on future developments, presentations, they'll be utilized. The next slide shows the proposed funding sources. They are, it, uh, multiple sources from basically the state, local sources, et cetera. Um, they're anticipating HFA bond, the first mortgage, and then subsidies, various subsidy programs using, through HCR, federal tax credits, state low-income housing tax credits, and there are brownfield tax credits, solar tax credits. And the city of Yonkers is putting in, is awarded CDBG and home funds for this. Restore New York has awarded money as well. And then the housing authority has put it, is putting in its money as well. And then the $5 million from Westchester County. And then the next slide shows that this project has several, has multiple costs that are unique to this development that raise the cost approximately 120,000 per unit. If you take out these costs, comes down to about 550,000 per unit, which is more in line with what we see for this type of development. The, the unique costs are demolition, the environment, the extensive environmental related remediation, the site work. As many of you probably know the site, it's quite a steep slope. And then you have the, the early head start center as well, and then all the related costs, soft costs, the GC construction contingency, et cetera, developer fee related to these costs. And then the next slide talks about the uses of the county HIF funds, which is mainly to build the 33,000 square foot park, which would include new roads, curbing, and retaining walls, play equipment, and also installation of a new water main, which will provide service in addition to these two phases of Cottage Place, but also twelve households along Willow Place. Seven of those homes are Habitat for Humanity homes. The request for county funds is $5 million, or approximately 29,000 per unit. And then the next slide shows the site plan for the park, which is quite extensive. And Anthony can, if Anthony's on, can talk more about it, but it includes extensive retaining walls, obviously the play equipment. You can see the, the walkway on the upper part. It meanders along to meet ADA requirements as the slopes are fairly steep. And it also includes the new roads and then the water treatment underneath the road as well. So, Anthony, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Um, this is Anthony, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah? Yes, as, as Len went through, it's, it's extensive infrastructure, includes stormwater. The one piece of the, um, city-owned water line actually extends what is now a dead-end line in the system and provides for, you know, it connects to an existing line, so there's no dead end. So, it's, provides additional fire protection and closes that, um, you know, that, that dead-ended system. The project includes, um, also construction, but construction management of the project for the city. So, the city will bid it. They will, uh, be retaining a consultant to do construction management, and the developer will be responsible for any cost above what the HIF funds are going to be paying for.
Thank you, Anthony. Anything, anything else, Len?
No, that's, and then the next slide shows existing conditions. It's a cottage, the existing building, which will be demolished. And then the last slide shows the rendering of the phase five building. And then the phase four building is shown to the right, which is currently under construction. And that is, I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? This was, uh, again, discussed at the last meeting, but, uh, the budget was further itemized for this, this meeting. So, any other questions on this?
Are there any plans to handle the displacement with the, with the, um, demolition?
They have to meet, so HUD approved the demolition obsolescence of the existing public housing. They have to relocate per federal requirement. So, the tenants that are in, currently in those buildings are relocated, either they're relocated onsite to new building, new apartments onsite, or they're relocated to other public housing, or they can get enhanced Section 8 vouchers and seek their own housing in the community.
Okay, and will the existing construction be, um, suitable for occupancy before the building's demolished?
Well, the existing construction, they would go into other phases. The phases that have been already completed or phase four that is currently-
I was going to ask you how much, that, there will be available apartments there?
It's, yes, I mean, presumably, that's part of the, that's part of the relocation plan.
I just wanted to hear that from you, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Rob. Um, so, of the, the, the old building had about 250 units. And do we know what the income levels were of those people who, of those units? Um, in terms of what, you know, like how they fit in the AMI? And will there be an equal, I understand the, the desire to have a mixed-use development, which I think is, is, is agreed. But will there have, will there be an equal number of the same income levels showing up in this larger development?
So, so I believe the answer is that the 250 units were all public housing and therefore, subject to public housing income restrictions. The income restriction for the new is, is mixed income. They are replacing most of the units that were lost. However, there are some that are not, that won't be at the same income level. And those are, so there is, like any, this is similar to Mulford Gardens and like any Hope, Hope Six-type project, which is the old funding stream used for these types of developments. There, there was usually a loss of the, of the low, very low-income units.
Okay, so I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that, that we are losing very low-income units. And my second question is, you showed here a number, the $550,000 per unit cost. Um, what percentage of that is the unit for, that includes the cost of parking in that?
Well, in these, in these two phases, in these two phases, the parking is very, the min- Well, in these, in these two phases, in these two phases, the parking is very, is a minimal amount of parking, thirty some odd surface spaces. Phase four included the construction of a parking garage.
Right.
Phase four is actually taking on the bulk of the parking costs for phase four, five, and six.
Are we gonna be, I'm sorry.
That's not showing any finance. Sorry?
So we're, are, are we gonna, are they gonna be coming back for additional funding from us?
Not for the park, and that was already financed by a HFA, um, HCR last year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that is actually the parking garage and the, the housing as part of phase four is already under construction at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Housing Implementation Fund for one seventy-eight Warburton Avenue?
This is Rob, so moved.
I second it, this is Reenie.
Reenie seconds, thank you. Let me go through the roll call again, Holly?
Yes.
Okay, Dwight?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Vincent? Vincent?
Yes.
Amina?
Yes.
Kathleen? Kathleen? Thank you, James?
Yes.
Bernie?
Epstein.
Richard, that's me, yes, and Gail or Hugh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. Then the last action item is again, the New Homes Land Acquisition Fund for twenty-six Garden Street, New Rochelle. Go ahead, Len.
Thank you. This is again, twenty-six Garden Street in the city of New Rochelle. It's a fair and affordable housing development. The next slide shows the location map. So twenty-six Garden Street sits in the downtown area of New Rochelle. It is very close to the train station and the downtown area. The next slide shows, shows the aerial view, which you can see even better as to what, where it is located. If you look on the bottom right hand, you'll see a beeline bus sitting there in the corner. It, that road leads down to the garage and the train station area and the bus station. So, and then ninety-five, you can see also adjacent to where the bus is, it runs under, basically under, below grade, so to speak. And, and the site itself is, is outlined in the red. The, the site, the parking lot directly across the street is eleven Garden Street, which was the, a development approved by the county about a year ago, or less, well, probably six months ago, with funds as well from the county. So the next slide talks about the development. It's a hundred eighty-six affordable units, a hundred percent affordable at sixty percent AMI or below. Has thirty-seven parking spaces, and it's a twenty-four story building. The building is being built adjacent to the New Rochelle branch of the Westchester County Family Court. And then the next slide shows thirty-four studios, one oh two one bedrooms, and fifty-two bedrooms, all of which are sixty percent AMI. The next slide shows the HUD income limits for sixty percent AMI. Again, it should be noted that this is two thousand nineteen, the two thousand twenty were just released within the last several days. The proposed financing for this development includes an HFA first mortgage, which is tax exempt bond, and then subsidy through HCR with the federal tax credits, and then the New Homes Land acquisition for five million dollars. The next slide shows the county funds, which is five million dollars, or about twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars per unit. The next slide shows the existing conditions. This is the view of the lot prior to any start of construction. And then the last, the next slide shows the actual site plan, development site plan, which the residential development will occur on the portion towards the right side and backing up to ninety-five. You should also note, in regards to the parking, I want to just go back to that for a second, that, um, the total development is building thirty some odd spaces, thirty-seven spaces for the residential. But the actual number of spaces available for the residents will be a hundred twenty-seven spaces in total. That includes the thirty-seven under the residential building, forty-six spaces under the courthouse that are dedicated to the residents, and another forty-four flex spaces under the courthouse that can be used by the courthouse or the residents.
Where is the courthouse on this plan?
It is the portion to the left. So there's sort of a dotted line. Actually, the next slide shows it better. So the lower portion of the building on the left, that's the courthouse facility, and then the, the residential is the taller portion. The first four floors or so of the residential building is parking, and the same for the courthouse, I believe. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yes, uh, this large mass wall that's on the side of the building, is that window? Or is that just brick or facing?
I think that's a, I think that's probably some type of glass for thought. I'm not, I'd have to check with the developer. But it, it should not be a, I don't anticipate it being a wall.
It should be a, a wall, a tower, to be honest with you. It doesn't represent walls in this picture.
Yeah, I'd have to double check, but I'd assume that that's probably some type of glass.
For the parking?
Go ahead.
Now, for the parking, so there's, so in terms of the dedicated spaces, just so I understand this, there's, um, eighty-three dedicated spaces for a hundred and eighty-four residential units?
Plus the, plus the forty-four flex spaces, yes. So the city of New Rochelle Planning Board approved the parking based on the zoning requirements for the city of New Rochelle, which gives the planning board a lot of leeway in terms of being in the downtown area, in terms of certain reductions, and also in terms of shared parking. So they approved the development and found that the parking was at, or is adequate to what they feel and also meets the requirements in the zoning code.
What is the status of the eleven Garden Street project across the street?
Eleven Garden Street, um, last we spoke to them, they had a large gap in their financing that they were trying to work on closing. And they were working on getting brown, brownfield tax credits into the development to try to help close that gap.
What is the breakdown of affordable in market in the eleven Garden Street?
That was, Jane, do you recall better than I? I didn't.
It's all affordable.
Yeah, it's all affordable, two hundred and nineteen units of all affordable.
So both Garden, eleven Garden Street and twenty-six Garden Street, both are gonna be all affordable?
Yes.
All across?
I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
If we could go back to the aerial view, please?
Can you go back to the aerial?
Okay. I just wanna point out that affordable housing is being built only in this part of the city, which is something that we really don't want anywhere. You know, it's being targeted only for this area of the city to have all affordable housing. And I know that in this board, we have discussed this, it's something that we don't want in development.
I'm not sure that's completely accurate, because we've already approved LeConte Place, and that's under construction. There's a lot of affordable housing being done and being constructed already in the downtown area as well.
No, I, I agree, but what I'm saying is that in this particular area, you know, this eleven Garden Street, and now we have right across the street, it's, you know, the, the current proposal.
Right, but I think what she's saying is, there's gonna be two buildings directly in one area of fully affordable as opposed to mixed affordable. Uh, James?
Will you repeat, repeat that, James?
So what I was saying is that, I think what she was trying to say is that in this one geographic area, it'll be all affordable as opposed to mixed affordable, you know, different, uh...
Absolutely.
Right, and that, and I think that, I, I understand what she's getting at, that we're gonna target one area, make it a hundred percent affordable, while we should be mixing it in other buildings or other residential towers that are going in at the ten percent or at more.
If I, if I could just jump in for a second? There is a decent amount of market rate housing either built or under construction proposed for in that vicinity, including just across the train tracks that the, I guess, I think it was the old Bank of America branch building. So there is all.
I know, I know the area.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, go ahead.
Um, this is Jane, I also wanted to mention that there is, remember with eleven Garden Street, one of the problems we had was that those units were serving as the allocation for other units as well. And that is not the case in this, in this development. It's not picking up, uh, an allocation for other parts of the city. And one of the things that...
I'm sorry, Jane, so you're saying that they're not banking affordable units in this building and not putting them in other buildings?
Correct, they've committed to that to us. And also, you know, in addition to, one of the other buildings that's right there is Trump Luxury Building. And also, you know, this is, that's the parking, this is a transit oriented development with the train station and the, uh, and the bus lines there. So that's another reason why they've planned for approved, uh, lower number of parking stations.
This is Richard, um, it is true, the site does have a lot of advantages. It's in the downtown, it's near the train station. But the fact remains that two a hundred percent affordable buildings are being built on one street, uh, across from each other. And, uh, I don't think...
And additionally, how do the people, this is how...
That's not, I don't think that's by accident.
And how do you cross over? You'd have to cross over, is there going to be an overpass or some walkway for people to walk across that busy road?
Len, Jane, you wanna answer that?
Where, are you referencing North Avenue? Cause there's a traffic light, there's a traffic signals right there that have pedestrian crossing signals. You can see the crosswalks in the picture, some of them are faded a lot, but they're, they're there.
Um, I think it's also a very important point, because you're also gonna have, you know, schoolchildren that are gonna be in that area.
Um, can I mention something? The fact that the two buildings are there, um, coincidentally, you, you might say it's not an accident, Richard, but it's not as if we can say if these units are not built, they're going to be built somewhere else. So although people may have objection to these two buildings across the street from each other, I just want you to be, you know, very careful and keep in mind that this is, you know, it's very important to have this number of affordable units added to the county. And to say that you don't want them approved because they're across the street from another while in an area with many luxury buildings does not mean that they're going to be built somewhere else. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind.
I'm sorry, it was just speaking there?
This is Bernie Tomm speaking.
This is Jane Lindau, the Director of Housing.
Thank you, I don't think that, that, uh, uh, whether they're going to be built someplace else is the issue. I think that the issue is that, uh, we are making a statement as to our disapproval of the fact that they're so close to one another. And I think that we would like for them to be built in various places throughout the, throughout the city. So, um, I think that we're, we're trying to make a point here that, uh, we recognize that the city is doing this, and we want, we want them to be cognizant of the fact that we don't want this to happen in other places also. So making a statement is important about this construction also.
Yeah, and I agree with, I very strongly agree with Richard.
So this is, this is Rob.
I have a quick question. Um, the eleven Garden, this is Daniel, eleven Garden predates me. How, how tall is eleven Garden? How many units, how tall, how many floors?
With two, this is Jane, it was two hundred and nineteen units, it is two hundred and nineteen units. And it is, uh, it's, I have to look up, I think it's also about twenty-two stories. I'll look it up while we're talking. Now, the other thing to keep in...
Okay, thank you.
As, as Len said, eleven Garden is not built, and they are having a funding gap. So if we say no to this development and eleven Garden does not go through, you know, we're down four hundred units of affordable housing in New Rochelle. And also, I also wanna point out, this is not low income housing. You know, this is affordable housing in an area that is not all affordable housing, okay? But I'll look up, uh, while we're talking, how many stories that one is.
What's, excuse me, this is Richard.
This is Rob.
Go on.
Okay, so the, the only, the only other concern I have, um, I'm very sympathetic to the, the issues with concentration, but I do understand how this is really close to the bus station, although whoever brought up the issue with the, um, pedestrian environment, which I think, um, I can't remember if Lucas put that in his comments or not, um, how getting, getting from that site across to the bus station is a little hairy. But my other, my other big concern with, with, with the development is the, is the fact that the air quality, by definition, next to I ninety-five, if that's, that, you know, is, is going, is already going to hamper, hamper the sort of, you know, issues like brain development, asthma, all that stuff, um, from particulate pollution. And it, it, it concerns me, is there any kind of like sort of mitigation built into the development, whether air filters or something that's gonna, you know, mitigate that?
We, we can check with the developer. We, we did talk to the developer about noise, which we thought would be a concern as well. And the fact that ninety-five sits down in the sort of a trench, so it's already down, let's say thirty feet, plus the first floor, floors of the building is garage, so there are no residential units there, so already you're starting, let's say, forty, fifty feet up. So we did talk about noise, they will be putting in a thicker glass to accentuate noise. We'd have to check with them on, on air filtration systems. I mean, the, generally speaking, you know, they, the systems have filters and things like that, but we don't, I don't know about additional filtration at the, at this time, I'd have to get back to you.
Thank you, Len, and, and if you could just take a look at like what's happening in California, where they're realizing that, you know, the high pollution zones are traveling far, you know, like pollution's traveling far more than they ever originally thought, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
This is Richard.
I also had a question related to that, is there any green space?
In this, in this development, there is no, no particular green space at the moment. There is, the, the roof, there will be some green roof installed, but I don't think there's gonna be public access to those roofs. And then, uh, and then there are amenities inside the building, like a children's playroom, a fitness room, et cetera, but there is no per se outdoor space for this development.
This is, this is Richard. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that eleven Garden is twenty stories tall.
Well, you're breaking up.
Eleven Garden is, um, is tall.
Yeah, eleven, eleven Garden Street, you know, the HAF money for that development is paying for an outdoor plaza, which is public, so that these, these residents or children could, could use that as well. I think that's what you're saying, Jane, you were breaking up?
This is Richard.
No, I was saying that eleven Garden was twenty stories.
Oh, okay.
This is Richard, is... This is Richard, is, um, is Eleven Garden the building that was going to have the domestic violence units?
Yes.
Yes.
That seemed to have a problem with its financing from the day one. Um, any other comments?
This is Dwight, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about the, this proposal, both for concentrating, uh, low-income families in one area, and it's an area that's kinda boxed in by roads and, and the tr- train and everything else, and it doesn't, um, have the, um, the, the diversity that we looked at at the Yonkers proposal, which had, uh, income levels from thirty percent of the AMI to ninety percent. And my experience has been that those, um, developments are better housing in the long run, in that they've got, um, no, just concentration of fairly low income. This, this project then is all sixty percent or below, and it, and it doesn't do the thing that we got from Eleven Garden, when, when I looked at that, remember, we objected to having a concentrated building with just, just affordable units, but it had, uh, as part of its, uh, overall strategy, was offering s- supportive housing to people that, as you mentioned, had, uh, experienced domestic, uh, violence, and were often in rooming houses and, uh, in, in unsafe or unhappy places to live, and had, they had kids and everything else, so, that, at, uh, our discussion when we, uh, voted to approve that was that we did not, and I think we put into the resolution, that we did not want other projects to come in, uh, that would solely, uh, low-income housing, but rather to encourage the development community and the, and the city to bring low-income, uh, housing in as part of a regular, uh, market-rate housing development.
Dwight, I only, just, just, I think you should use the word affordable housing cause it's not low-income in the old traditional public housing, so...
Right, affordable housing. So, um, so I thought we had, were pretty explicit about that at the time and did not expect to see another project like this, uh, that, that's my recollection from that discussion, and I'm sorry to hear that it hasn't, uh, preceded, uh, the Eleven Garden because I thought that there'd be just such a wonderful thing for those women, mostly women, I guess pretty much all women, to have a really decent place to live, so, if there was effort to be made, uh, to see if there's anything else the county can do to get that project going, I would very, very much support that. I don't think I could support this, I'm just speaking for myself, and everybody will vote on it because it doesn't meet the goals that we articulated when we approved Eleven Garden Street.
Hey, this is Richard, I suggest we table this item, um, I think we have a lot of concerns, and I think, uh, you need to do a little bit more research to try to, uh, meet our concerns. That, that staff needs to do a little more research to meet our concerns. So, I suggest we table this item.
I agree with Richard.
Okay, if there's no objections, uh, maybe, uh, Ted, if you can do a quick census update?
Sure, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep. All right, um, I know we're a little pressed for time, so I'll try to go through this pretty quickly, just an update of where we are, um, the national response rate as of the data that was released yesterday, about forty-five point one percent, um, but here in New York State, um, we're significantly lower at thirty-nine point five percent, um, you can see the, the different states, some are a little ahead of us at, you know, into fifty percent, um, but moving on to the next slide to look at counties in the region, how we're doing, um, so the county is at forty-four point seven percent, so we are significantly above that state average, um, and we're also, we're really catching up to that national average. Um, there was a big, big cluster of, uh, response, uh, last week, right around April first, April first is Census Day, that's the day where we are counting the, the population, but that's certainly not the deadline, you know, everyone has an opportunity to respond themselves, and we are seeing those responses trickle in, uh, looking at this data every day. Um, but you can see compared to other counties in our region, um, you know, we're, we're doing fairly well, um, we're, I'm sorry, we're actually ahead of Suffolk County, that's new, uh, based on yesterday's data, um, that we, we do seem to be pulling ahead of some of the other counties in the region here. Um, you can see that, that Bergen County, New Jersey, Nassau County, uh, a little ahead of us, our, our neighbors to the north, Putnam, a little ahead of us, um, and Rockland just behind, um, and you can also see that those, those three outer boroughs of New York City are at the bottom, and that, that's been consistent, uh, you know, looking at this data since it was released, starting on March twentieth, um, and that's, you know, a big part of why the, that state number is lower. Um, moving on to the next slide, we can actually drill down to tract level data to see the response rates in different parts of the county, which is great, and this data is updated every day, um, it's measuring both the internet response rate and the overall response rate, which includes people responding over the phone and the mail responses. Um, so far, almost everyone is responding online, um, and part of the reason for that is that, if you remember, most people have not received that, that paper mail, uh, questionnaire yet to enable them to even respond, uh, through the mail, but, so, all households who have not responded yet will now get that paper questionnaire, those will start to go out, uh, starting tomorrow actually, through April sixteenth, so we do expect to see more responses through the mail, starting, uh, you know, in the coming days.
Excuse me, just a second.
And so far, when we're looking at the tract level data, we really do see that the, the areas with the lowest response rates are the areas that we identified as our hard-to-count areas, so, you know, we see that the, that exercise of identifying those hard-to-count areas actually, you know, was fruitful because those are the areas where we're seeing the lowest response rates. So, just quickly zooming around the county, um, on the next slide, we can see Mount Vernon, we identified it as our hardest account community, it does have our lowest response rate right now at thirty-one point three percent, um, and because we have that tract level data, we can see within Mount Vernon, what are the specific neighborhoods that have those lowest response rates? Right now, that's basically that Mount Vernon West area, if you think about, you know, from the Mount Vernon West train station down to the border with the Bronx, that, that little triangle in there, um, and you can see those other tracts on the south side of Mount Vernon and bordering the Bronx and Yonkers. Um, moving over to the next slide in Yonkers, um, we can see overall response rate of thirty-six percent, but the lowest response rate tract, um, is eighteen point five percent, and that is the lowest response rate tract in all of Westchester. If you remember when we looked at that Rockefeller Institute at Risk, uh, list of tracts, um, this is actually the tract right next door to that, it's not the same tract, but it's sort of the same neighborhood, that, that Nodine Hill neighborhood, um, so they, they were very close in identifying that most at-risk tract in the state, um, and, and we are seeing those low response rates there. Um, so moving over to Nurishell, uh, overall response rate a bit higher at forty-one point seven percent, but you can see again that, that disparity within Nurishell, that, that neighborhood, that west end neighborhood, um, right around the border with Pelham, that's that lowest response rate area of Nurishell. Um, moving over to the next slide in Portchester, uh, the tract eighty, which is basically the neighborhoods right around downtown Portchester, um, that's a very low response rate area, uh, twenty-one point nine percent right now, um, and that's actually the lowest response rate tract outside of Yonkers and Mount Vernon. Um, and interesting to note that tract eighty-two, which directly borders tract eighty, has a much higher response rate of fifty-three point six, so it's one of the highest in the county, so you can see that, you know, sometimes we have these disparities within municipalities, um, and we can really identify the areas of municipalities, um, that, that really should be the focus of, of our outreach efforts. Um, you can also see in, in this map that Rybok neighboring Portchester has a very high response rate as well. Um, moving over to White Plains, um, again, you can see downtown White Plains has some very low response rate tracts, the lowest is actually track ninety-three, which is actually the track that includes the county office building and many other county facilities, um, at thirty-one point nine percent, um, but at the south end of, of White Plains, um, the tracts have very high response rates, um, the one ninety-seven oh three is sixty-five point two, and that's among the highest in the county. Um, if you remember, another area of interest from the Rockefeller Institute at Risk Tracts, um, was that North White Plains neighborhood, um, and that's actually just outside White Plains city limits, uh, in the town of North Castle, that's currently at forty-one point two percent. Um, and another area to note on this map that is also not in the city of White Plains, that's that Silver Lake West Harrison area, within the town of Harrison, um, that's currently at thirty-eight point six percent. Uh, moving on to the next slide, looking at Sleepy Hollow, Tarrytown, and Mount Pleasant, um, that, that tract in Sleepy Hollow, that's sort of the, the inner village of, you know, sort of downtown Sleepy Hollow, um, that's that lowest response rate area at twenty-nine point one percent. Um, and if you look to the east there, if, if you're, uh, familiar with looking at, at census tract maps of the county, um, that weird-shaped blob often shows up as sort of a data anomaly, and that, that's actually the grasslands campus, um, at Valhalla, um, a lot of institutional uses in that, that area, um, but there are some housing units in there, um, very low response rate right now, um, but you can see to the north, very high response rate areas, uh, including Mount Pleasant and Sleepy Hollow. Um, so moving on to the next slide in Austining, um, the tract with the lowest response rate in Austining is currently one thirty-three oh one, that's sort of, again, in and around downtown Austining, um, but if you notice that big white blob in the middle, that's Sing Sing. Um, and just a reminder that this data, this is showing us self-response data from households, and if you remember that the Census Bureau counts group quarters separately, so, um, correctional facilities, um, any group living facility are counted separately, um, essentially the institution can respond for the, the people who are living there, um, so we are, we are not looking at any of those, those, uh, the data on that population. Next slide, um, moving on to Peekskill and Cortland, um, again, within the city of Peekskill, you can see that, that, um, that central tract, um, is the lowest response rate area in Port, in, in Peekskill with twenty-eight point six percent. Um, another little interesting area, um, to the east in the town of Cortland, that area between, um, Main Street and Route two oh two, Crampon Road, um, a very low response rate area, that's actually the, um, lowest response rate area in northern Westchester at the moment, um, at twenty-four point one percent, and you can also see some low-response rate areas around Berplank and Montrose. Um, one issue we've identified, you know, we've been sort of trying to figure out, okay, why are these low-response rate areas if they're not, you know, what we thought they would be? Um, and in some cases, there are issues with mailings we've identified, for instance, previously, the, um, Village of Larchmont had a very low response rate, um, and then we got all these, these messages from people saying, hey, I live in Larchmont and I never got any mailings, and we eventually figured out that there seemed to be a delay in those mailings, and those responses started coming in later. Um, so in these areas of northern Westchester, there are people who live in areas where they don't get home mail delivery, um, the Census Bureau will not send those invitations, those mailers, to a P.O. box that you would pick up at your, your post office. Um, so people who live in those areas will be, uh, uh, visited personally by, uh, an employee from the Census Bureau who would drop off that mailer. Right now, they are not doing that, um, they have suspended all those in-person operations, those field operations due to coronavirus, COVID-nineteen precautions, um, so we would expect that those, uh, areas will have higher response rates once that resumes. So, moving on to the next slide, um, just looking at the municipal totals, um, you can see some of the disparities between the municipalities and the county, you know, we are looking every day at, you know, what, what municipalities are lagging behind and which ones are ahead. Um, so you can see right now, for instance, that, you know, Mount Vernon is the lowest response rate municipality, um, and the Village of Hastings on Hudson, um, has a response rate of about double what Mount Vernon has right now, um, so sort of, you know, again, trying to think about how we can target, uh, our, our efforts to provide support to municipalities. Um, obviously, with the current situation, a lot of the in-person events, a lot of the, the, you know, census hubs where people could go for help in purses, in, in person are currently on hold, um, but, you know, we have to think creatively about doing these different, you know, online events, email blasts, um, Facebook Live, things like that, and we actually have seen, when we look at the daily updates, that municipalities that hold these, you know, online events, actually do then get a bump in response rates, um, so it's great to be able to, to look at these in real time every day.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
Yep.
And, uh, is there any other business? Hearing none.
Richard, Richard, it's Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, just quickly, and I, I'm sorry to end it on this note, but I'm sure you might have heard, uh, and Norm and I have spoken, um, Jeremy, Jerry, or Jeremiah Lynch passed away suddenly, um, a couple of months ago, like in February, uh, actually, the, uh, beginning of February, I don't know if you knew that?
No, I did not.
Yeah, I believe he, believe it was an aneurysm, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't wanna give false information, but a, a friend of mine owns Beecher Funeral Home, which is in Pleasantville, and he actually did the cer- you know, he performed the ceremony and whatnot, so he had called me, told me what happened, so, just unfortunate, he was sixty-two, so, um, just, I wanted to just let the people that knew Jerry, um, know it, and, um, that's, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kathy. Um, is there any other business? Okay, I wanna thank everybody for putting up with this, uh, difficult procedure in this difficult time, and I wish everyone well, stay safe, and, wait, I just heard a motion to adjourn, I heard a second, can I hear, everyone?
Yes.
I heard everyone say?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Hear the motion and the second, sorry, this is Michael.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, hopefully next week we can meet together, but, uh, we shall see, be safe, bye, everybody.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Richard. Hello?
Hi, Richard.
Bye, everybody. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Richard, are you still there?